This is the June 23, 2014 meeting of the Revere City Council. Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas. Here, Councilor Morbido. Here, Councilor Novosolsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. At this time, the Revere City Council will issue certificates of commendation to the Criminal Investigation Unit for their role in Operation High Tide.
name after that. A certificate of commendation in acknowledgements of his exemplary and precise police work on the operation High Tide with the Revere Police Criminal Investigation Unit, which resulted in the apprehension of 26 individuals and two juveniles on several counts of controlled substance violation in efforts to crack down on opiate distribution in the greater Boston area. Special recognition is hereby given to Lieutenant John Goodwin, Criminal Investigation Unit, Revere Police Department. This certificate of commendation is presented by the Revere City Council, Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 23rd day of June in the year of our law, 2014, in the independence of the United States, the 237th. It is signed by our city clerk, Ashley Melnick, and myself, Anthony T. Zambudo, President of Revere City Council. And this motion was offered by Council Robert Haas, who will be handing out these certificates. You have to make me put the other glasses on so I look old. That's why she hinted right away. Sergeant Lynn Romboli. Detective David Kamenica. Kamenica, I'm sorry. He's not crossed off here. Let's rip me up. Oh, I'm sorry, you correct me. I should have never doubted my city clerk. And the others will get their certificates soon. Thank you very much. Can we take a picture here?
Yeah, let me see. Let me see.
Oh, go right ahead.
Under Chief Cafarelli's leadership, John Goodwin did a tremendous job. And whenever you can round up all of these individuals at once, it takes crime off our streets. It made it safer for us all to live. So congratulations, gentlemen, for your job well done.
We're going to take a couple-minute recess. Okay, we're going to bring this meeting of June 23, 2014 back to order. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the Journal of the meeting of June 9, 2014.
Mr. President.
Councilor Penta.
Can I have just suspension of rules?
Yeah, let's just approve the Journal first. All in favor, all opposed?
You just did. I thought you did.
So voted.
I'm sorry, maybe I jumped in. I thought you did.
I didn't get to the panel yet.
Okay, I see that the financial director is here. I know he has another engagement to go to, so just those twice, if anybody has questions, I'll take those up now.
Okay.
Just to spend, for suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number four, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee for the FY 2015 Budget and the CWSRF Loan Orders.
Chairman Penta.
Mr. President, first, I go to CWSRF Fund. That is going to be kept in Ways and Means until we get some further information that we've been waiting for quite some time. The budget is very short and sweet this year, and I want to thank the committee members and also all the other councils. Just about everybody did make it to the meetings as many as they could. I want to thank them also. I'll just mention the committee members, Council Rigo, Council Guanasso, Council Morbido, Patch, myself, and like I said, every other council. Janino's been here several, Council Haas, Council Novosolsky, Council Powers, and Council Riordan, also, just about every one of them. The only I would like to mention is that unless somebody has individual cuts, I don't know of, but we took it, so I'm not going to talk much in the budget. Like I said, I mentioned it to Ways and Means several times. I want to thank the mayor for his hard work and his department heads that were very forthcoming to come up to the council chambers here each and every night they had to, to answer questions. And it was a very lean budget. One thing I do want to mention, I want to mention the school budget also. We don't talk about that much, but we don't have any control over the school budget. And the Superintendent Dakin, to his credit, they shot $600,000 this year, and they're doing it without coming to us asking for more money. And I thought that was very admirable on his part, thinking that the city was strapped very tight also. And like I said, the mayor, just about everybody that asked for money from the mayor, he just refused them at this point in time. Everything that was given out in that budget is just about contractional, and he had to. And I credit him, like I said, his department. And the budget itself, the way they explained everything in East Department, though we've been looking for this for several years, and they started putting it as the first budget this way, and I know they're working on next year's budget. But that being said, Mr. President, I'll open up to councils and ask you to ask for a roll call on the 15 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for your hard work on the budget, and I too am grateful to the mayor for the way the budget was laid out this year. It's a different approach, and it was pleasant to see it, and it didn't go without a lot of effort into it. Council Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to speak on the budget. And I will say this, I am not the least bit disposed to take the administration to task for any budget that's reasonable. And I think this budget, under the circumstances, is certainly arguably reasonable. But I think I would be remiss if I did not mention a couple of things about the budget and the budgetary process and what we face year in and year out in the city of Revere. And that is essentially that we are asking our property tax owners, our residential and commercial, but mostly our residential taxpayers who are largely on fixed incomes, to carry the burden of our expenditures in this city. Obviously, we get some money from the state back, but nonetheless, the taxpayers, the property taxpayers, are not only that, but they are also ratepayers in our water scheme that we are now in the process of undergoing monumental changes to. It seems to me that while we continue to find ways to spend money, I don't mean find them, I guess. What I really mean is we spend money, we have a lot of constituencies, obviously, we had salaries that need to be considered this year, et cetera, et cetera. But at some point, and frankly, I hope it's during the next budget cycle, that consideration has to be made to giving the taxpayers in this community back something tangible, something concrete, and something meaningful by way of a financial break. We are looking forward, hopefully, to better economic times, from what I understand from the budget director as well as the mayor, and I believe them both, that regardless of whether the casino comes, that we're looking for development in this city, which will be helpful. But I want to make sure that the administration gets the message that I, for one, am going to be very circumspect when it comes to making sure that at the next budget cycle, the taxpayers, the property taxpayers, and the water and sewer ratepayers in this city are getting some just due and something that we can point to and say to them, this is your opportunity, we appreciate what you've done for the city, for the youth in the city, for the fire, for the police departments, for Public Works, and this is what we're giving back to you at some point. And I really do hope that, George, next year, you can come in and point something to that in this budget, and we can say to them, thank you, and give them something meaningful to thank them with. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Riordan. Council Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, it's no secret that I have been in opposition of using reserves, and one thing that has not been mentioned is that we are using $2.5 million in reserves this year. Last year, we had used $1.5 million in reserves, and the fact that we have to continue to rely on reserves does show a structural deficit in our budget. And I'm going to continue to oppose any measures of spending that we can't control. And Council Riordan mentioned that we don't find ways to spend money. I think we do. I think we continue to. And the fact that we've had to use $1 million, an extra $1 million, now $2.5 million in reserves kind of proves that. There have been a couple of communities that were talked about during the budget process. The city of Malden was mentioned. What folks omitted was the fact that Malden did use some of their reserves, they also keep 7.5% of their budget in reserves. So they have approximately $10 to $11 million in reserves. So it's a little bit easier for them to use that money. We're using $2.5 million. We're projected to have $3 million. I think we're still going to have to spend more of that rainy day money to meet our obligations. And let's not forget that three years ago, in a short time, there were $2 million that was deposited into the Rainy Day Fund. There hasn't been a deposit that big since, and I think that's something that we should be doing. We're on the brink of a very important time for the city, as Council Riordan again noted that next year, hopefully, we can have relief for the taxpayer and the ratepayer. We're not going to have relief for the taxpayer or the ratepayer unless a casino comes. And for us to use our savings money, to use some reserves on things like raises, non-contractual raises, there are raises that are not contractual, there are raises in the mayor's office, those are things that we shouldn't probably be spending money on at this point, given that we don't know what our future is going to be with or without a casino. And if a casino doesn't happen, we're not going to be able to give that relief. I think that's an unfortunate thing, because as we learned earlier tonight, we spent $37 million, $37 million on improvements to the water and sewer infrastructure, and that is directly paid for by the ratepayer. And that is a lot of money. And for us to not look at the ratepayer and not say, you need a break, it's really a disservice, I think, up here. And one other note that I'll make is that nobody's saying that this is an easy situation, but we have to make difficult decisions. And difficult decisions haven't been made. We've kicked the can down the road. We're using reserves as an easy way to fill up the budget. And when we don't make those difficult decisions, we end up in a terrible position. And the perfect example of that is all of the SRF borrowing that we're doing, the $37 million that we have to spend on water and sewer repairs because of the lack of initiative to take care of our water and sewer system. We kicked the can down the road with our infrastructure, and we pay for it in the end. If we continue to kick the can down the road with our budget, we're going to end up paying for it in the end. I appreciate the leeway and time, Mr. President, and I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Rigo. I'm sure you're going to get a bit of rebuttal, and I think a big portion of the budget this year was the fact that...
Point of information, Mr. President. Are you, can you speak from the chair?
Mr. President.
I will refrain from speaking at this point, and then I will ask my colleagues if I can speak from the chair.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Council Chairman Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to get into, I mean, I thought we spoke about this, it lent the budget hearings and stuff, and I think Council Haas basically, a week or two ago, basically said it. And I agree with Council Riordan, but to give back to the seniors and stuff of the city, $2.5 million, and basically, Council Haas asked a simple question. If we did not appropriate that from the Rainy Day Fund, what would happen? Very simple, cuts across the board, police, fire, DPW, not to be rocket scientists, on increased taxes. The mayor seemed fit, and this council did, because we voted 11 to nothing, seemed fit to take $2.5 out of the Rainy Day Fund to make the panel easy on the senior citizens in our city, the residents. Yes, we do owe them something to take care of them now. And on top of that, on top of that, when the mayor, and I hear $2 million when the mayor took over in stabilization fund, the fact is it was $1.2 million. On top of that, the $1.2 million, no contracts were signed for a couple of years. So he inherited all that back pay of millions of dollars on budget process, contractional. So basically, it was left zero, the way I look at it. And since he was in office, even with taking the $2.5 million, we have $3.1 million still in there, over that, still in the Rainy Day Fund. It went up every year, 2.6, actually went down to $2,300,000. But that was to offset and to give the ratepayers a break.
Point of inquiry, Ms. President, what relief has the ratepayer gotten? What relief has the ratepayer gotten?
All right, here's the deal.
None. Mr. President, first of all, let me finish my point, and like I said, I don't know how simple...
Council Penta, you have the floor.
I don't know how simple this can be put, and Council has backed me, I think I want to say, I don't want to put words in your mouth. If we didn't appropriate the $2.5 for the Rainy Day Fund, you don't have to be a rocket scientist. Where would you get the money, after increased taxes or make cuts? And this council, this council, and yourself, Council Rigo, voted to take this and transfer it into the budget, 11 to nothing. And the reason we did that, because if we voted it down, if this council...
We haven't voted on the budget yet.
You're right. But if this council seemed fit, well, I asked anybody if they wanted to make cuts or anything else, and no one spoke up, but if you do, then that's something different. But this council would have had to go back, tell the mayor, go back to your office and go back with $2.5 million in cuts. And I don't know, there wasn't a council here that spoke up and said they're willing to do that, and I'm not going to charge these senior citizens any more money than we're charging them now. Council Riordan is 100% right. You have to give something back to them and work this thing out, balance act. It's a balancing act. It's not a rocket scientist, it's a balancing act. But I mean, you say the city got left $2 million, that's not true, it was $1.2. We're in negotiations that haven't been settled, that we had to pay for. So the mayor basically came with a level funded, no money Rainy Day Fund. In the water and sewer, there's actually almost $1 million in stabilization fund for water and sewer, which we didn't take. So I mean, numbers and numbers, numbers don't lie. The $2.5 million was to give a little relief to everybody out there without making cuts. I can't see, I mean, if you cut any more to DPWs, what have Pottles done in September, maybe? So I can't see where you'd make cuts. I wouldn't want to be, don't want to sit there making cuts. But it's the leanest budget I've seen here, and I've been on this council since 1993, I got on here, I've been on here for 16 years. I've never seen a budget this lean. And talk that we spent $30 million on water and sewer, I'm still in shock, we only went up 2.25% in the water rates. After spending all that money, and everybody agreed, nothing was done in the past, and over the last three years, there's more been done than the last 100 years of repairs. It only went up 2.2. I think that should be commended, the financial director and the people that put all these numbers together. But like I said, Mr. President, I'll ask you to take a roll call and a vote for the budget.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to allow other councils to speak first. Council Powers.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I agree somewhat with Council Rigo. I know it's a very difficult thing to sit on this council, and it's sort of like taking money out of your savings account at home, but many times, these are things we have to I also feel that while we took that $2.5 million out of the Rainy Day account, there was money put into that account from free cash over the past several years. And free cash, in my opinion, and I believe in the opinion of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is to be used for one-time expenditures. And I feel very bad that sometime in March, we didn't sit down when people were driving through broken potholes all over the city and trenches that weren't repaired. And we all knew we were going to have a rough, we had a rough winter. We all knew we had a lot of water breaks. And we also know that the Department of Public Works didn't have the resources to address those problems. And I had put a motion in sometime back then, asking to use some of the free cash for that. That's what I consider a one-time expenditure. If you have streets collapsing out there that need immediate repair, you address them. So that's the way I feel about the free cash and about the usage of free cash. I realize that we had to use that money to balance the budget, no question about it. I don't think that the ratepayers in this city, water and ratepayers, taxpayers, or anyone else can afford any more increases in property taxes. I think the mayor did a good job with this budget. I'm not criticizing him for that. But I also think we should have addressed that earlier situation with the potholes. We just sat, and potholes didn't get fixed, I know in my ward, some of them until June. And to me, that's a sad statement for me to make tonight. And I also hope that next year, we'll look at this budget, we'll look at it clearly, and I think before any more pay raises are granted in this city, we really have to start thinking about giving something back to the ratepayers in this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Council Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. The obvious is that we're challenged with the opportunity to give and provide services for our community, because they've been so deservingly needing, and we do that. Did we address the pothole issue? Did every city in town address pothole issues? They became unbearable because there were so many. Living in this city for many years, I've never seen it so bad. But it wasn't because the road conditions were bad, it's just that the weather that we had was so severe, and it's in every city in town. It's so severe that it's hard to keep up with this kind of effort, and so it requires millions of dollars to do it right. Do we find ourselves challenged about the budget? The budget is the budget. I know, and I said this before, that there used to be old tricks, that we'd cut $1 million out of healthcare, and say, oh, we just reduced it down. And then we know, six months later, we have to throw it back. just reduced it down, and then we know six months later, we have to throw it back because you have to pay for it. So it's all semantics here, we, we, we have to pay the bill, somebody has to pay the bill. It's the rate payer, it's the taxpayer, they pay the bills. What they're looking for currently is relief now, which is good to plan for the future, five, 10, 20 years, but the, most of the people that I speak with in the city want relief now. So to go to the well and borrow on, what they referred to as the rainy day fund, we had to do that. We do have the hopes of maybe things changing financially within the not-too-near future, but we can't live on those hopes, we just can dream, it's like hitting the lottery. But the only thing that we can go with is what we have to work with now, and we can well afford what, what you're doing. We haven't caught, we're not gonna injure anybody, everybody's gonna be working again. It would be, and as was stated by one of the previous speakers, the mayor had a couple of big budgets that he had to meet and contractual agreements that he had to come to, police and fire, long-standing, these, these people, we ask of them to come and do their daily routines, so we have to pay them. You know, and that's only justified, we have to pay for our services. And who, where do we get it? We can't become creative, we're looking for new growth, we're obviously gonna get new growth, we got a waterfront development that's gonna be a half a million dollar project, we have a lot of things, with the exception of the casino. We have other things that are, we have the One Land Dog Track site, there could be something done with that. We have some probabilities there, we have some very good possibilities to, to increase our tax base and to, to give some relief to our taxpayers. Are we saying that we should lower the tax rate? We don't need to lower the tax rate, everything's going higher, I mean, how are we gonna lower it? Can we stabilize the tax rate? That would be wonderful. And then in addition, if we get some windfall, maybe we can put enough monies into the water sewer and tax relief to be beneficial to them then. But we foolhardy to suggest that in today's world, any city in town is gonna lower their tax rate when everything else is going up. Costs of city, doing business in the city is going up, costs of doing business, living in your own home is going up. So how do you figure the city's gonna go down? It's not gonna happen. I mean, and how, can we look to certain areas where we probably spend more money than we should? We can micromanage that and try to come up with some sort of solution, but we're charged with a responsibility here. We made mention of the fact that CDM, tonight, previously, we, we, some of us counselors had a little concern about a big packet we just got with millions of dollars in there. That's the oversight review that we have to provide. The citizens out there can't do that, we can, that's our job to do that. So we have to ask questions when they're needed. But when I sat, the, several of the subcommittee meetings in Ways and Means, and I offered out, you know, everybody to their person said, well, this is a lean budget, we can't cut here, this is a lean budget, and it was night after night, this is a lean budget, we can't cut here, we can't, tell me where you could've cut it? And then we could, we could reduce what we're, what we're challenged with, but there was nothing to cut. 75% of our, our budget is salaries and wages, so what, what do you cut? You know, cut out the technology, what do you, what do you cut? You know, things, we're looking for answers here, but to me, we really had to do what we had to, we did, and hopefully there's a brighter future, and hopefully things will go well for us in, in the near future, and, but the, the thing that we have to, the message we have to send out to our community, we're a very stable community, financially, we're solvent, don't worry about that, there, we're not gonna go into receivership, we're not gonna hit you with an extra tax burden, we're solvent, we're paying our bills and city services are being provided. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Guanasso, Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been up here many, many years, as you all know, I dealt with many budgets, eight in the mayor's office, and I can honestly say, this budget is lean, but it has been lean since I was mayor, there's no question about it. You come up here, you make sacrificial cuts, you always hit the MWRA because that's a big volume item, and what you do is when you, the mayor's establishing the tax rate, you put it right back in. Now, it's quiet at that point in time, but the councils go out and say, we cut 300, a half a million dollars, but in effect, the net effect is they put it back in. So it's always great to yell, taxpayer relief, taxpayer relief. In order to have taxpayer relief, we collectively have to cut the budget. Now, where do you cut it? Everything is at the, the minimum staffing? I mean, it's hard up here as counselors, sitting here, when you get a budget. The budget comes in, we look at it, there's only one, one way to, to take care of a budget. You have your revenue and your taxes, no other revenue. This has been lean up here in Revere for many, many years. Now we have a chance of some development, and I'm not even gonna mention the casino until it happens. If it happens, oh, well and good, all right? We've got some development happen, you've got a shopping center that may open up very shortly down Northgate, you have the building on Ocean Ave, 194 units, you have, in Revere, you're starting to see some development, and with a bond rating of AA1, that helps out. But again, right now, we cannot cut, and if you wanna cut, you cut the bottom line is employees, that's the bottom line. And when it comes up here for a vote, everyone sees those people out there, the vested people, and they don't want them to be against them, all right? So tonight, we're voting on the budget, you're either for it or against it. Not that you're trying to take care of your senior citizens or police or fire, you're dealing with your priorities, your knowledge, and your expertise to make sure that you cast the deciding vote for which way it may happen. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Haas, Counsel Morabito.
Thank you, Ms. President. You know, most of the councils here, my fellow colleagues, spoke about the budget and how it was lean, and there was not much fat on it, and I concur, but we can't ignore that a rate increase of 2.25 isn't bothersome to myself or the citizens out there, but our hands are tied. But we're also playing a game called the balancing act, and each year, we keep offsetting it with our free cash. There's gonna come a day in the near future where we're not gonna be able to balance it off unless the casino comes. And I don't even like to think about the casino and putting that into the equation. We have to save up that piggy bank, but there's nothing we really can do right now, it is tied, but how long can, I guess my, I throw the question out there, how long can we play the balancing game? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Morabito. I guess at this time, I'll ask my colleagues if it's okay for me to speak from the chair. Any objections? Okay.
Mr. President, honestly, I can't sit here and not object. I, I have to tell you, the way to do this is to have the Vice President take the chair, and you can speak from, from, I mean, I, I would move to have the Vice President take, take the gavel at this point, if you wanna speak from the, it's the only right way to do it.
Well, you gotta take a vote over the chair.
You gotta, you gotta vote over the chair. Wanna do a roll call?
On the motion.
Second.
On the motion to overrule the chair, Counsel Rego?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
No.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
No.
No. Counselor Penta?
No.
No. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
No.
No, the chair is not overruled.
It's been protocol up here for 15 years that the council president has spoke from the chair. Now, if we wanna change that in the future, I think we can do that. I've been up here 15 years. I, unlike some of my younger colleagues up here, was on this council when we did not have a rainy day fund. We're talking about how we dipped into this rainy day fund like we're gonna doom the city. Well, let me tell you, most cities and towns dip into the rainy day fund if they're fortunate enough to have a rainy day fund. We are, and I might mention that our current mayor was the sponsor of the rainy day fund. Bottom line is, we're talking about how unfortunate it is that we're paying for these water and sewer rates, and, and we're doing these unbelievably expensive repairs. We're not doing this because we're great guys, we're doing this because we're directed by the federal government, a mandate that we have to, this is a consent decree, that we have to do this, okay? Is it good for our citizens? In the future, it will be. Is it stop sewer overflows? Yes. But the bottom line is, we're forced to do that. I wanna mention a couple of other things about this budget, you know, one of my colleagues mentioned Malden, who happens to have some more money in their rainy day fund than we do. There are a lot of cities and towns that have less that use money from the rainy day fund for the budget, but that's neither here nor there. What we neglect to say here is that that $2 million that was, that big deposit in the rainy day fund was really just an insurance policy because the contracts were not settled. That was just a savings account to pay for what was coming, for, for kicking the contracts down the road, so to speak. Bottom line is, the city's probably never been in better financial shape. We got two bond upgrades to a double A minus, a bond rating, where we can go out and borrow money for less than 1%, never happened in the history of the city. We've got a half a billion dollar project on Revere Beach, which has growth. We've got Harley-Davidson coming to the Linden Square area that's, uh, new growth. We've got a lot, we got a, a nice mom's motorcycle down Broadway, we've got a lot of growth and a lot of interest in the city. Revere is on the move. It's on the move for a number of reasons, and one of them is that we're fiscally, fiscally responsible up here. Did we have to use 2 and a half million from the stabilization fund? Yes, we did, and mostly, most of that was the contractual obligations, and, and the bottom line is, I'm grateful that we had it in the rainy day fund, and that we have a rainy day fund here on the Revere City Council in 2014, because it wasn't that way in 2000, 2005, and the, the years that I served up here. So I'm, I'm not one who wants to cut services for anybody, because frankly, we've got a DPW that's so understaffed that it's, it's, it's almost laughable. We've got a police department that's understaffed. It's just not doable to make these cuts. So it's easy to say that we don't wanna take money from the rainy day, but, fund, but in this instance, we have to, and it's not because we're not fiscally responsible, it's what we have to do to meet our obligations. And hopefully, we're gonna have even more growth than we have already got in the bank, so to speak, but I, I, like I said before, I've been here 15 years, we're in good shape. I can tell the citizens that we are in fiscally good shape here in the city of Revere, and we got a great future ahead of us. So if there's no other comments, I think we'll, we'll move to question.
Shall the city council approve the fiscal year 2015 budget as presented by Mayor Rizzo in the amount of $160 million, I'm sorry, $160,922,830? Counselor Rego?
No.
No. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. The FY 2015 budget has been approved.
Mr. President, we're on the suspension rules now?
We are.
Move the, oh, reconsideration-
Reconsideration on the hope it will not prevail. On favor or opposed?
Count it on nine and 10 while the-
Madam Clerk. If I can have everybody's attention just for a second, the clerk is gonna read something that we're gonna attempt to vote on that does not happen to be on the calendar, there was a piece left off, so she'll read it and hopefully it'll be self-explanatory, and we can go from there. Madam Clerk.
This is from the Director of Finance, George Anzoni. The free cash certification for June 30th, 2013 was $3,292,270. The amount of $493,840 was transferred into the stabilization fund on June 9th, 2014. The amount of $2,532,5, I'm sorry, $2,532,345 will be utilized to fund the budget for FY 15. The remaining amount of $266,085 will be requested to be transferred into the stabilization general fund by the end of the fiscal year.
That's calendar item number nine, Mr. President, if we can take that up.
We have to transfer the 2.5 first.
Shall the city council approve, I'm sorry, shall the city council approve a transfer from the stabilization fund to balance the 2015 fiscal year budget in the amount of Counselor Rego?
Just a quick, quick item on that, that's from a transfer not from the stabilization, but from the free cash.
Okay. Shall the city council approve a free cash tran, a transfer from free cash in the amount of $2,532,345 to balance the fiscal year 2015 budget? Counselor Rego?
No.
No. Counselor Janino?
No.
No. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. The transfer has been approved. Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the transfer of free cash to the stabilization- Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the transfer of free cash to the stabilization fund general fund in the amount of $266,085. Roll call on the motion to transfer $266,085 from free cash to the stabilization fund general fund. Councilor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The transfer has been approved.
Back to the regular order of business. Okay, we're back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number one, hearing called as ordered on the application of Wakefield Associates, Inc., 544 Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass. and 770 Washington Ave., LLC, Saugus, Mass., requesting an amendment to the city of Revere zoning map as described in the petitioner's plan.
Proponents? People in favor?
Counselor?
Good evening, councilors. Corey Rhodes, D'Ambrosio Brown, LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about a proposal from Wakefield Associates to build some nice new development in the city of Revere. This is going to be an 18-unit residential condominium complex. It's gonna be at the site.
Can you speak up? You gotta speak to the building into that microphone, because it's hard to hear you. Did you say an 18-unit condominium?
This is an 18-unit residential condominium complex. This is gonna be at the location of 770, 778 Washington Avenue. You may know it currently from the picture here. We're talking about a significant investment to bring this project to the city. Approximately $4 million is gonna be spent to bring these units to the city. If I could show you a rendering. This is the beautiful new building I've been talking about. We think this is gonna fit in with the neighborhood, with the area. This is right down the street from what was mentioned here tonight, the Harley-Davidson that's coming to the city. We think this is gonna be the new type of condominiums that people are gonna be looking for and wanting to move to the city and provide that new tax base. Also, in the ground floor of the building, we're gonna be looking at approximately 2,500 square feet of retail space to keep that kind of retail, commercial format along Washington Avenue. To get this project here, we do need some zoning relief, and we're proposing a map amendment related to seven very small lots in the rear of this property. As you can see from this blow-up of the zoning map, we are talking about this very small chunk in the back of the property. This is all in the residential B district, and we're proposing to change it to the general business district. All this surrounding the property, this is already in the GB district, and we think this parcel just somehow got left out over time, and this seems to fit in to be a very normal change, something that probably should've happened a long time ago, and an easy solution to bring such a great property and project to this city. We think, again, there's good reasons just to bring this here, not to mention this beautiful new building, but the rear of this property is already used to kind of seem to dumping dirt and construction debris and things like this. We're really gonna be cleaning that up by bringing this property here. And just to highlight again, we're talking about a $4 million investment to bring this beautiful property and project to the city. Just to show it off again, but we'd be happy if you'd consider our request.
Thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor of this project? Okay, a show of hands of people. It appears there's a cheering section out here. Show of hands. Okay. Seems to be quite a bit of support for this project. Okay. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Opponents, people opposed to this project? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. City councilors? This is obviously going to zoning subcommittee, yes. Note-takers? Sony?
Thank you, councilors.
We're looking for suspension of the rules. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Okay, we're gonna take up a communication from Clear Channel.
Calendar item number eight, communication from Yano Amara relative to Clear Channels requesting to withdraw its application without prejudice for two digital billboards at number four Furlong Drive, Revere, Mass.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
And calendar item number two is, the hearing called as ordered on the application of Clear Channel. We've just taken that out.
That's placed on file.
Okay. Calendar item number three, hearing called as ordered on the application of Rachel Ferranti, 19 Overlook Ridge Terrace, Unit 305, Revere, Mass., seeking permission to alter a pre-existing non-conforming use for the purpose of operating a dance studio within the RB district at 225 Beach Street.
Proponents? People in favor? Counselor?
Mr. President, members of the council. Joseph Cotojio?
No, we'll call for that later. Counselor?
Joseph Cotojio, One Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicant Rachel Ferranti, who is seeking a special permit for the conversion of a non-conforming use at 225 Beach Street in Revere. The most recent use, I believe, has been a commercial office space. Prior use was a longstanding use as a lodge for social purposes. My client is looking to establish a dance studio at the location. We have been before-site plan review and look forward to working with all the required departments, fire department, board of health, building department, for any and all required renovations to the building, although we are not expecting them to be extensive by any means. We are excited to provide a family-friendly, healthy and safe activity for the citizens of Revere and their families and their children. My client has the support here tonight of her family. The council is aware that the Ferranti family and the Bova family have longstanding ties and deep-seated roots in the city for many generations. We are dedicated to providing a safe atmosphere in all aspects and look forward to approval by the council. We were here to answer any questions you might have and would request approval. This is a purchase. We are buying the building, so it is not a lease situation. We are intending on being there for the long haul and look forward to community involvement and a lot of neighborhood pride.
Thank you. Any other proponents? People in favor wishing to speak? Okay, we'll have a show of hands of everybody in favor. Another strong cheering group here. Okay. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Would you want to speak? I'm sorry. Go right up. Step to the microphone.
Yes, thank you. John Michie, 20 Cary Ave., just like to speak on behalf of Rachel. I think her business would be a fine addition to the city, and I think we should also, if I may be so bold, encourage young people like Rachel, young entrepreneurs, to open businesses in Revere like this, and I have absolutely no objection. I live short distance away, and that could be fine for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your input. Okay, any other proponents? No other proponents? You want to speak? Come right up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
My name is Josephic Tino. I reside at 21 Joey Road. I am a mother of two girls, and my daughters attend Rachel Academy. And I'm here to say that she is a longtime resident of Revere, and anyone who would have her in her own city should be proud. She is dedicated to her students, and she's very friendly, warm and kind, and this would bring some positivity in Revere, and I think that would be a great choice if you folks would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? No? Okay, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Would you want to speak? I'm sorry. Go right up. Step to the microphone.
Yes, thank you. John Michie, 20 Cary Ave., just like to speak on behalf of Rachel. I think her business would be a fine addition to the city, and I think we should also, if I may be so bold, encourage young people like Rachel, young entrepreneurs, to open businesses in Revere like this, and I have absolutely no objection. I live short distance away, and that could be fine for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your input. Okay, any other proponents? No other proponents? You want to speak? Come right up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
My name is Josephic Tino. I reside at 21 Joey Road. I am a mother of two girls, and my daughters attend Rachel Academy. And I'm here to say that she is a longtime resident of Revere, and anyone who would have her in her own city should be proud. She is dedicated to her students, and she's very friendly, warm and kind, and this would bring some positivity in Revere, and I think that would be a great choice if you folks would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other proponents? No other proponents? You want to speak? Come right up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
My name is Josephic Tino. I reside at 21 Joey Road. I am a mother of two girls, and my daughters attend Rachel Academy. And I'm here to say that she is a longtime resident of Revere, and anyone who would have her in her own city should be proud. She is dedicated to her students, and she's very friendly, warm and kind, and this would bring some positivity in Revere, and I think that would be a great choice if you folks would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? No? Okay, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? People opposed to this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Counselor Gino?
Thank you. Rachel is a really well-known dance instructor in the city, and she has been for as long as I can remember, and I know recently on the council, we've talked about a lot of great after-school programs for kids and things for the kids in the city to do to keep them, you know, off the street and moving and active, and it's a healthy alternative. It's a great program, and I think that she's providing a really necessary and needed service to our city, so I definitely support this and encourage my colleagues to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gino, and the ward counsel, Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to speak with the young lady a couple of weeks ago. I think it's a, you know, a great, great thing for the city. It's positive. I know this will be going to committee. I would just like to, in committee, probably discuss the parking down there, how that's gonna be arranged. As you know, Beach Street is, we have the doctor's office down there, we have the other establishment near the old church down there, and I just want to make sure that, I see a fellow from Cary Ave. come up here tonight, he doesn't seem to have any problem with it, and he's a direct butter, more or less, with regards to the parking situation, so I'd like to discuss this further in committee, and I have a few questions regarding the parking, which I'll save for committee, but that said, I welcome, I certainly welcome this type of business, this type of entrepreneurship by the young lady to the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I think she, the dance studio is outside of Revere at the present time, so it's great to bring a Revere resident back to Revere, and dance studios is kind of new to me, because I had three boys, but I have a lovely granddaughter, and I've been going to recitals now for three years, and it's a new experience. But the competition is good, and also, in pertaining to the location, I grew up in that area, and it was always a crappy building. It was, they never took care of it, and knowing this family, I know they'll put their heart and soul into the property, and I think it'll be just a plus for Revere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. I'll just quickly say that this young lady's reputation precedes her, and I've heard nothing but wonderful things about you, and I think we're gonna be thrilled to have you in our city and have your studio here. So, this is going to the zoning subcommittee.
We look forward to the meeting. Thank you.
Calendar item number five, report of the appointment subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman and Vice President Guanasso?
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, the appointment subcommittee met, and we had the following. The reappointment of Toradi Construction was held over because they didn't appear. The next was an appointment of Yolanda Napolitano, 63 Washington Ave., to the Board of Trustees at the library. And then we had the reappointment of John La Croix, 35 Green Tree Lane, to the License Commission for a six-year term ending June of 2020. And we also had a reappointment of Nick D'Angelo, 387 Prospect Place, Revere, to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term expiring June 2019. Then we went on to the appointment of Phyllis Bagnola, 86 Gore Road, to the Historical Commission. And then finally, we had the reappointment of Menino Construction Company, 76 Oakwill Street in Lynn, as a licensed drain layer. We've asked the city clerk to remove that name because they did not appear at four events, four appointments, subcommittee meetings, therefore, they're no longer considered as a licensed drain layer. I ask that the committee, the whole vote favorably for the, that all those that have mentioned, if you have any exception, that you want to have one pulled aside, we'll vote on that individually. If not, take them all as one and vote favorably. Thank you.
We'll do them all except the one that's being denied.
On the confirmation of appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso, Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The transfer has been approved.
Back to the regular order of business. Okay, we're back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number one, hearing called as ordered on the application of Wakefield Associates, Inc., 544 Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass. and 770 Washington Ave., LLC, Saugus, Mass., requesting an amendment to the city of Revere zoning map as described in the petitioner's plan.
Proponents? People in favor? Thank you for paying attention down there.
The city council has already taken up calendar items number six and seven. They were for reappointments and appointments to the Historical Commission and the License Commission, placed on file.
Placed on file.
There's no further business?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn till, the city council will be adjourned till July 14th, 2014.